Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular meeting of Waverne Council. Before we start into it, I'd just like to say a few words, repeat a few words that I spoke last night at the visual that was held for the Humboldt Broncos. There are really no words that one can say that would serve to the magnitude of the tragedy of our fellow Humboldt team and community. For many, perhaps most of us, there is an awakened sense of vulnerability, a realization that we too have driven these same roads or sent our children on similar roads with strong faith that they'll return home safe to us. This realization is a reminder how fragile life can be and how important it is to always appreciate those around us. In the face of tragedy and sorrow, we use this time to come together in support of those who have suffered immense loss and to come together as a stronger, tighter community, a stronger province, a province and community that supports each other and especially those in need during difficult times like these. We, together, will now and forever keep the Humboldt Broncos in our hearts. And we'll just have a moment of silence, if you would, please. With that, we will say that we will ask for that, again, to make note on Discover Waverne. If you wish to go fund me, it's on the Discover Waverne article and they'll be able to see. So, come on in, Louise. So, with that being said, we didn't start a meeting yet, but we'll start a regular meeting of the Waverne City Council, held in council chambers at 5:00 PM, Monday, April 9th, 2018. The first order of agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and the Strategic Planning Priorities Committee meeting, held March 26th, 2018.
I'll make that motion, your worship.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Mr. Warren, any additions to the agenda?
Nothing from administration, your worship.
Is there any additions to the agenda of any council? At that, we move forward. There are no public hearings and notices, there are no delegations, proclamations, petitions, reports of standing committees, there is none, there is no consent agenda. The motions, first motion is, accounts payable?
George Wheeler. I'd like to make the motion that the purchase in the amount of $890,359.29 from March 23rd to April 5th, 2018 be passed for payment.
Seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. The River Park entrance design, we have a Director of Engineering, would speak to this?
The River Park entrance leads to the city of Waverne River Park and the ground, as well as River Park's other amenities, including Spray Park Playground and Signal Hill Trail. The existing entrance feature to the River Park was created in the early 1990s with the use of the railway ties to create a three-level terrace features which are planted along each tier. This request for proposal we submitted for consultant is divided into two parts. Part one is a request for proposal for development of the design and scope of work, construction plan and construction cost estimate, and it will be followed by part two, which is the actual construction of the entrance feature based on the document received from part one. The River Park entrance feature request for proposal was advertised on SASC tenders. In total, four bidders was received, HTFC Planning and Design out of Manitoba, Associated Engineering out of Regina, Scatcliffe and Miller and Murray, and Crosby and Hanna Associates. All proponent were evaluated in three areas, approach, relevant experience, and contract amount, and the engineering department would like to recommend that request for proposal to be awarded to Associated Engineering for the development of design, scope of work, construction plans, and construction cost estimate in the amount of $13,920 excluding applicable tax.
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the bid of Associated Engineering to provide the development of the design, scope of work, construction plans, and construction of the River Park entrance feature in the amount of $13,920 excluding PST and GST be accepted?
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the discussion. Chair recognizes Mr. Mickle.
Thank you, worship. Nader, the question I have, Associated Engineering is not the little bid on this project. Could you explain the rationale why you chose that one?
The lowest bidder here in this request for proposal is out of Manitoba. He didn't attend the site meeting, though it wasn't mandatory for attending the site meeting, however, like you know, there was some features which was included in or discussed during the site, like the site tour, which we feel that Associated Engineering, because they had this tour, they attended this site visit, they have a better understanding for what is the requirement from our staff and for the city of Waverne.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, your worship, but just for everybody's information, the Parks Department has been working on this for a number of years to get money in place to revitalize this entrance way. I believe it goes back into the 80s when that was first designed there with the railroad tracks and railroad ties, not tracks, and so we just think it'll be a tremendous improvement because our riverside park is used a lot, especially in the summertime, and we're looking forward to it being a new design. Talking with Nader at our Parks meeting this afternoon, the council and the Parks Department will be involved in creating the design, so it's just not those people coming forward with something. We're going to have a hands-on with what we are looking at and, of course, bringing in the cost situation also, so looking forward to this going forward, your worship.
Any further comments? That being said, all those in favor? Carried unanimously. We now move to the wastewater infrastructure tender. We gain back to our Director of Engineering.
In 2018, the city budgeted for infrastructure improvement work for water and wastewater to be completed by contractors. The proposed work was divided into four areas as follows. Number one, hydrant replacement, five hydrant location was identified at a allocated budget of $35,000. Street valve replacement for five location, sewer service connection replacement for five locations, and manhole refurbishment at nine location. On March 7th, 2018, a request for proposal was posted on SASC tenders, the city of Waverne website as well. The request for proposal was divided into four parts as above. The potential bidders were informed they could bid on any or all of the parts. The request for proposal also indicated that the city would provide all material necessary to complete the work with the exception of part four. In regards to part one, two, and three, Margate Construction submitted the lowest bid by a significant margin for other bidders. In regards to part four, for manhole refurbishment, Turnbull doesn't meet the full scope of work as contained in the request for proposal. The bid from Top Shot while meeting met the request for proposal requirement. The request for proposal contains provision for decreasing the quantities of works citing budgetary constraints. Our recommendation as an engineering department is to, it is recommended that Margate Construction be awarded the work as described for part one, two, and three of the request for proposal as bears the cost detail in the table above, and for Top Shot Concrete to be awarded the work as described in part four of the request for proposal as bears the cost detail in the table above, and it is recommended that the overall quantity of this work to be reduced to meet the budget requirement.
Your worship, with that, I have two motions for this work to be done, and we'll deal with one at a time, and my first motion is that the bid of Margate Construction of Waverne to provide hydrant replacement in the amount of $14,416, street valve replacement in the amount of $14,575, and sewer connection replacement in the amount of $12,932 for the 2018 water and wastewater infrastructure work be accepted.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Chair recognizes Mr. Fisher.
No questions, just good news, this coming in so far under budget, like, that's very good to see, and thank you for your diligence on this file.
Mr. Wheeler? Because we're so far under budget, there is mention that we could possibly do some other work that's been outstanding. Has anything been kind of earmarked for that, or is it just, if you can think of something new, do it at that time?
We can add the extra work, like you know, to allocate the entire budget for this year, to consume the entire budget for this year.
No further discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously.
So, my second part of this motion would be that the bid from Top Shot Concrete of Saskatoon to provide manhole refurbishment at nine locations in the city of Waverne in the amount of $70,596 be accepted.
I'll second that motion, your worship.
Call the discussion? So, Nader, explain again why Turnbull and Esteban wasn't, although he is lower bidder, why you didn't?
For the manhole refurbishment, like you know, it was mandated in the request for proposal that they will do realigning for the entire manhole. Turnbull, while discussing with them, like you know, the requirement needed for the city, they indicated that they will do the refurbishment for the base but not the lining for the entire manhole, so this was a main part of the request for proposal for doing the realigning for the sites as well.
Thank you. No further discussion at that point in time? All in favor? Carried unanimously. We now move to the street lighting tender. We gain back to our Director of Engineering. You are very busy here tonight.
As mentioned before, the city currently owns the downtown street light that were installed in early 1980s. Saskatoon maintains the infrastructure for this project, however, the city maintained like the boards and the decorative boards. The unreliable operation of the street lights on Third Street, North East, and Suris Avenue have been a concern for the city of Waverne since 2011. So, the engineering department got direction from the council to move forward with this project. On March 27th, the street light installation project request for proposal was posted on SASC tenders and the city website. Quotation was received by the city of Waverne on April 3rd, 2018. A total of five proposal was received, which of two of them were disqualified due to receiving them after the closing date. The result for the proposal as indicated in this table. Industrial Electric and Instrumentation Limited out of Waverne proposed to add an additional optional component for procuring an installation of traffic signal lights to match the proposed design at a cost and at an extra cost of $159,336. So, it is our recommendation that the street light installation project contract be awarded to Industrial Electrical and Electric and Instrumentation Limited of Waverne Saskatchewan at a total cost of $319,700, and an optional traffic signal light component at a cost of $159,336.
Call for motion, please. Is there no motion? Okay. Mr. Wheeler?
Yes.
Could we have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the street light installation project contract be awarded to IEI Industrial Electric and Instrumentation Limited of Waverne Saskatchewan at a cost of $319,700 with the option for traffic signal light component of $159,336.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the discussion? Chair recognizes Mr. Mickle.
Thank you, worship. Nader, the first part of the tender of $319,700 is respectable, but the question I have is the optional traffic signal light component of 160, is that a little high?
It's a little bit high, like you know, once like this contract is awarded to Industrial Electric, I will enter into a negotiation with them. The traffic signal component is foreseen a little bit high and we'll try to negotiate this pricing with Industrial Electric.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Van Betje.
Thank you, worship. So, that being said, if they come back and say, no, $159,000 is the price, are we committed to go with that, or are we still flexible to say that, no, maybe we'll wait till next year and we'll rebid it out?
We are not committed to go with this. The only thing, like you know, if we are doing the LED light replacement, it would be a sore in the eye to have the intersection with this old component for the traffic light. There is nothing about leaving it for next year, or even, there is another option for us procuring the four traffic poles with all the component and industrial installing them, rather than them procuring the material, because procuring the material item itself, it is $117,000.
We do have an option, then?
We have, in fact, two options.
Does this contract, this $319,000, does that, do we procure the light poles, or is that included, the procuring of the light poles included in that contract?
This include everything, this is design built, they are going to procure the material, do the design, and install the service and the infrastructure as well.
And expected time of start date?
Start date, it depends upon, like you know, the awarding date. They need a lead time for procuring the poles, 10 to 12 weeks.
Which will period, send to May, June, end of June? No, July, mid-July?
Somewhere like this, yeah, exactly.
Okay, mid-July. Any further discussion? Chair recognizes Mr. Van Betje.
Yes, thank you, worship, and I just probably don't need to bring this up now, but I'll do it, well, it's on my mind, that the Car Club has a car show in early part of June, and just to make sure we're not in mid-middle of construction while that's going on or whatever.
Yeah, Councilor Van Betje will have to watch out for that and also for the parade in July, so that's something that we'll have to work with the contractor to talk about to make sure we have certain events that we know are happening in the community that we are aware of that way.
So, probably after the fair, the first week in July, be timings for the construction to start?
Yes, worship, yep.
And this is estimated time of construction? Do they have any estimated idea of completion date?
In the request for proposal, it was mentioned that we need to finish construction before, like by the end of September, so there is a fixed date for completion, but there is no more in-between time.
Okay. Any further discussion? This, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Just as we scan, and I apologize, I didn't make mention that to the rest of council and to the members at home, absent tonight from council is Councilor Chessler, Chessler, Councilor Chessel, and Chessler. Anyway, Councilor Chessel, he is away on business at this point in time, so we have one absent, if you happen to see that we are having a vote, but we still have a quorum. The next one, water main replacement on Fifth Avenue South. Back to you again, Director of Engineering.
In 2018, the city budgeted for replacement of cast iron water main on Fifth Avenue South between Third Street South and Fourth Street South to be completed by the contractor. This work is being funded in part through the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund. The scope of work includes the replacement of approximately 200 meters of 150-millimeter water main and associated infrastructure. On March 15th, a request for proposal was posted on SASC tender and the city of Waverne website. The request for proposal indicated that the city would provide all the material necessary to complete the work. The request for proposal also stated all work must be completed between July 2nd, 2018, and July 23rd in order to facilitate asphalt resurfacing where already been awarded. The engineering department would like to recommend that Margate Construction be awarded the work as described in the request for proposal, and as bear the cost detailed in the table above, which is $54,166, and as bear the condition stipulated in the request for proposal.
Do you have a motion?
Thanks, worship. I make a motion that the bid of Margate Construction to perform water main replacement on Fifth Avenue South in the amount of $54,166 excluding GST be accepted.
I'll second that, your worship.
Any discussion? Chair recognizes Mr. Mickle.
Thank you, worship. Nader, the same individual is just received is for tender this evening? Do you think there's going to be a problem with time factors to get these completed?
The first component, like you know, he's supposed to start it somewhere, like you know, in May and finish it before July. The second component will be, like you know, the water main replacement, it is mandated to have it done before July 23rd, and he will start July 2nd after the school year. I don't foresee any problems happening, and we already have discussed this with Al about the timeframes and the constraints he have, and he is feeling comfortable that he can fulfill the contractual requirement.
Thank you.
How much under budget is this, then, approximately?
This fund is a total of $1 million, approximately $1 million, it includes government road. It was initially targeted for government road, however, we thought that integrating part of the fund for Fifth Avenue for changing the cast iron with government road would be beneficial for the citizens of Waverne.
And this is from the difference between top budget, top bid is $180,000 and Mr. Margates' is $54,000?
$161,000.
Yeah, $161,000, so almost, yeah, $110,000 cheaper.
$110,000 is not, it's $100,000 cheaper, yes, but like you know, the highest bidder is suggesting a different technique, a different technique for installing the water main, so he's using by bursting methodology, which is way different from oven trenching.
Okay, so it's different technology that they're using for the difference. Any further discussion? At that point, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Brings us to summary meeting, cancellation?
Your worship, I'm just, just before we start?
Mr. Warren, if you would, speak to it.
Yeah, your worship, we're just looking at canceling the July 9th meeting, that's a request from administration right now. We just are looking to have a little bit of a break this summer and see if we can have that break approved by council tonight.
Mr. Mickle?
Worship, a motion that the regular meeting of council scheduled for Monday, July 9th at 5:00 PM be canceled?
Second.
I'll second that, your worship.
Chair recognizes Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, worship. Just for clarification, city manager, there'd be the one meeting then, which would be the 24th, that'd be the only meeting in July?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and we haven't addressed August, or are we going to leave it?
We're going to leave August as-is.
As-is, thank you.
Any further discussion? At one, if you would, then at one am away at the Police Commission meeting, when is that?
Yes, your worship, actually, I checked the schedule and you will be able to make both meetings in August.
Okay, as well as Councilor Van Betje and Councilor Bailey. Very good. At that point, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. And just to kind of give background that, this summer, in mid-August, we on the Police Commission, there is a Canadian Police Commission meeting that is held, is going to be held all week, and as I see it on the Canadian Police Board, I'll be in attendance, some of our members will also be in attendance from the Police Commission, whereas Alderman or Councilor Van Betje and Councilor Bailey, as well as a few of the members from the Police Commission, being so close, and that'll be in Winnipeg mid-August. As for this Sunday, I will be going to Ottawa to do a lobby day through the Canadian Police Commission Governance Board also. The next order of business, Waverne Beavers liquor permit approval?
Yes, your worship, we had a request from the Waverne Beavers from the Western Major Baseball League, looking for their annual liquor permit to sell beer at Tom Lane Park for their games. Their games usually go from late May until early August, depending on playoffs, and they're looking for similar requests they have to provide to Liquor and Gaming. They also have a map that's already been provided to Liquor and Gaming from past years of where the alcohol be served and security and all those purposes for that.
Do you have a motion, please?
Thanks, your worship. I'd move that the request from the Waverne Senior Beavers Baseball Club to make application to the Saskatchewan Liquor and Gaming Authority to sell alcohol during all their home games for the 2018 baseball season at Tom Lane Park be approved.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? There is no discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Approved unanimously. The Iron Pigs request to serve liquor?
Your worship, exact same kind of request, so this comes from the Waverne Iron Pigs who play in the Cabell Valley Baseball League, it's a senior baseball league for a lot of local guys who play here. They follow the same protocol as the Waverne Beavers do for alcohol at Tom Lane Park, so what they're looking for once again is approval from council for their ball season. Their games usually go once again, I think they start in June and they go all the way until first part of August again.
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the request from the Waverne Iron Pigs Baseball Club to make application to SASC Liquor and Gaming Authority to sell alcohol during all home games for the 2018 baseball season at Tom Lane Park be approved.
Your worship, I'd like to second that motion. Any discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. There is no unfinished business. We are down to new business. We have a quest for amended landfill fees. Chair recognizes city manager, Warren, if you would speak to that, please.
Yes, your worship. City administration has received a request from Jerry Manil Limited, who is currently doing work on demolishing our Waverne Inn in the community, and they're looking for amended landfill fees. We just went through our landfill fees back in January, but they're looking for amendment of the fees again. In the request, they're looking to see if we review the current policy to set a dollar amount per ton and not to exceed a $0.94.
amount per ton and not to exceed $0.94 per square foot, so allow both residents and businesses alike to have a budget to have the maximum cost of disposal fees for those projects. There's some stipulations that they would request a part of this, that the materials must be from within the city and Waverne area. Customers must be either a resident or business within the city of Waverne. Debris must be mostly stick-built properties, so that's home or business, and therefore must be relatively free of brick, mortar, concrete, metal, any hazardous materials, and recycling of as much material as feasible possible to be performed in advance to reduce the amount that would be going to our landfill. So, right now, they've also said that if council finds the proposal favorable, that Jerry Manil Limited would be prepared to supply men and equipment to the city landfill to assist with the disposal of the Waverne Inn property. So, tonight, we actually have Darcy McCormick here from Jerry Manil Limited to answer any questions that you guys may have on this request.
Before we start into discussion, we have to have a motion as to either approve, disapprove, either a motion for tonnage reduction or something so that we can enter into discussion. So, do we have a motion of any sorts? With that, I will pass the gavel over.
Do we need a motion to have an open discussion in our presentation?
No, I thought we had to have a motion to discuss.
No, I don't think so.
And then decide on a motion? At this point in time, if you would please, Mr. McCormick, come forward.
Your Worship, council members, thank you for your time this evening. I guess the proposal as it is, the stipulations were more of an understanding after discussing with different council members and with city manager alike and stuff, that there is a concern that it's got to be from within the city of Waverne, and there's a number of landfills that are being closed down, and there is an increase in the city landfill. I guess what we're kind of hoping is for something that can put a cap on the fees that we can budget for this job and for other jobs for the customer, that there is a maximum amount. That's one thing that I know, early on, a year ago, when they were kind of accepting bids on this job, it was astronomical numbers were thrown around as to what the cost is for potential demolition, disposal costs, and it, it was hard to calculate what that cost is. And earlier this year, in December, we took down 16 duplex facilities, and working with that customer, we came up with a calculation per tonnage that it worked out, and it was a stick, asphalt shingle, truss, woodstick, mortar, stucco building with insulation, worked out to $0.94 per square foot. If we can take something like that into agreement, we've, you know, engineered drawings such that are available, if we could calculate or put something into that formula that would help put a cap on fees, it's a lot more advantageous for businesses and prevents it from getting disposed of anywhere else, I guess.
And within your proposal, you talk about having removal of all types of as much brick and as much, all the mortar and, I guess, all the rock and heavy materials out of the...
Yeah.
So, that's not going to go into our landfill?
Correct, Your Worship. So, what we've done is we've had crews in the building, we stripped out all the copper, all the wire, all the appliances, all the furniture, as many of the windows and doors that could be salvaged have, were removed prior to demolition. We let the Waverne Fire Department do their training in the building for a number of weeks. I think we had nine different training seminar, or they've had nine different training seminars in it. So, it got to a point, we just had to move forward with it. The metal was, has been stripped off, we've, so far to date, it's just over 20 tons of scrap metal. Copper has been taken to morgulots to be recycled. The brick and the mortar is also separated and pilings have been pulled out of the ground. Majority of them right now, I think we've got about 80 of them pulled out. We've got the basement to deal with yet. I've got all of the debris pushed into the basement to try and prevent it from blowing around anywhere outside of contained. Right now, I guess is best way to put it. Hoping for favorable decision tonight, obviously.
What, I would open the discussion on, here is to open the discussion, my opinion is that you're basically, that we have done a study on our landfill. We have looked and we've started a refuge program to extend the life of our landfill, although that these type of projects, we have to know and understand that these type of projects aren't going to happen within our, our city as there's, houses are being torn down and placed and they have to go somewhere and it ends up in a landfill. We have to also keep on the other side of the balance, realizing that these enormity types of things are going to shorten the life of our landfill out there. And with that, any sort of proposal or motion be such that it has to be done in, such that you're going to be doing a total recycling program, such as what you have said, that no metal can be going into there, everything has to be stripped out, they have to make sure that they, the brick is all taken out and all the other stuff. There are some cities like Portland, Oregon, has even gone, any house over 100 years old, the house has to be stripped down completely and all the wood salvaged completely out of the house because it's such good wood, and that has to be done, and then, so then it becomes more costly, although it becomes a little bit more costly and time-consuming, there also has to be restrictions so we're not having just, as what you have proposed, debris, you know, separating the debris out, making them sure the brick is set out and everything. Now, as for the next question, I'm going to direct to our Director of Engineering there. Have you seen any sort of tonnage on normal stick and, stick and frame? Like you said, did you, how many tons was brought out of that, or do you even have an idea of that other project over there? That on, by the...
I didn't bring it with me, Your Worship.
Okay, but as to comparison, when you start just taking away wood and wood framing and insulation and all this stuff, no brick, no, nothing like that, if you...
Correct.
How much stuff? Do you know, have any idea whether this dollar a ton, dollar square foot would meet our tonnage there now?
No set figures on my mind right now, just to keep in your, in our mind, like, you know, for this particular demolition, they received a demolition tax concession for last year, and this was on approximately $30,000. And as well as, they were allowed to leave parts of the foundation, pile foundation, and slab below eight feet in the ground, which was, which is a substantial cost if it was taken from the ground. So, that being said, it's the council's decision whether to act the numbers or, or not.
Chair recognizes Mr. Van Betje.
Thank you, Worship. Thanks, Darcy, for coming tonight, and I have a few questions, and I'll direct the first ones to our city engineer. The landfill, in my belief, is based on a, basically a cost recovery.
Yes.
Right, so, and is there any economies of scale by us having to, by him bringing large loads in? Is there any real savings there? Does it cost just as much whether you get a truck one day and 10 trucks a day? You know, from operation standpoint?
What you mean by cost saving?
Like, from operate, from an operating point, if he's bringing in 20, 20 trucksloads of demolition material in one day, are we saving time or having to deal with it all at once, or is it not really?
It doesn't strike much...
Doesn't really affect it too much, okay. And then, next question to our city manager would be his offer to bring in his own staff to help in the landfill. I know we've had similar discussions before in other situations, and it's always been a liability issue, and I wonder whether...
Yeah, it all depends on the situation. Sometimes because of it's on our site, we have to make sure that we have the proper personnel on that site to do that. In my limited experiences as a city manager, I haven't seen anything like that, but usually for any other project I've worked on within my own police service department, it's usually our staff first, and then we bring contract workers on, on the side. So, it's usually we have to have a contract with them for that kind of work.
So, I think, like, a couple of the items are, I guess, I don't support the, giving any reduction in the fees, and a couple of the reasons why are, I think that it is a regional landfill, so to just limit the deal to the city of Waverne, I don't think it's fair because it is a regional landfill and we have people from outside the city that are bringing materials in. It would, I think it would be onerous for the city staff to be, who determines how much, what's been recycled and what's a fair amount of recycling and that type of thing. But the biggest reason, I think, is that the city is a utility, and by giving you a deal, that's a cost we're passing on to the rest of the citizens of Waverne, and I don't think that that is fair. I think council's been fair to the owners of that property and that we give them a tax discount. Also, given them a break on removal of the, not having to remove the basement, so that saved them some dollars. But my biggest reason is I think we're, we're taking costs that is going to save them money, and we're putting that on the backs of the taxpayer, and I, I don't think that's fair. I think we have other policies in place going forward if they construct something on that site, that there might be some tax advantages there, but as far as, as the land, reduction of landfill fees, I, I won't support that.
Chair recognizes Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Your Worship. Darcy, first of all, I'd like to commend your company for making a nice, clean job of that. Other than a little dust floating around, I, I don't think there was any debris flying anywhere. What is the stage of it right now? Obviously, you hauled material out. Is it just about cleaned up for the, for the wood structure part, and what are you doing with the concrete?
Yeah, so at this point, material, the concrete, we're digging it up, it's stockpiled on the, along the backside of the property. The building itself has been pushed into the old basement or the existing basement, I guess, for the most part. The metals have been picked through and stripped out, but the material is actually still all there, and we have been hosing it down, we've got a water trailer coming through as we see fit, trying to best handle the dust.
Okay, so all the, all the construction material, the wood material and everything, is still on site, crushed up or broke up as much as you can?
Correct, yeah. It's, it's ready for removal.
I didn't think that basement would, I know it was a big basement, I never dreamt it would hold the bulk of that building.
And more. Yeah, oh yeah, it's, it's still got voids in it, it's surprising, but when you take the metals out and...
Okay, thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Mickel.
Thank you, Worship. Thanks for coming, Darcy.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work you've done over at Pioneer Place and what you created at the Waverne Inn. Here's my take on this. I don't believe the bylaw needs amendment. I think it is, is, it is pretty straight and clear. I sort of knew this was going to happen with, with the Waverne Inn. Our tipping rates almost doubled January 1st, 2018. The situation over by Pioneer Place, they pay the tipping fees of 2017.
Correct.
Correct. So, what I, I suggest, without changing anything at all, you simply tell Mr. Barber he'll get 2017 rates. If he would have came here, I guess I'll be quite honest about this, we can't start cutting tipping rates at our landfill. There's a no-win situation. I wish they'd have come to us prior to the end of the year, this could have been solved, but they didn't, so here it is, what it is. So, I, I would like to see the rates for Mr. Barber go to 2017 rates, and let's move on. These are, he's a very community-minded person, as the other individual that took down Pioneer Place, and this way they're treated equally, and I think it's time to move on.
Chair recognizes Mr. Richards.
Thanks, Your Worship. Darcy, I'll thank you too for coming and doing a good job over there because it looks pretty good. The site's really nice. What I don't, and I talked to you about this earlier as well, I don't understand the magnitude of a project like this, so I hear these tons and tons and tons, but, and I know it's hard for you to answer, but can you give us some sense of how many tons of stuff is there of debris that's got to be hauled out of there into the landfill? And I know that's a hard, I know that's unfair of me to ask you that because you don't know, but rough estimate, how many tons of material?
Rough estimate, probably 700 to 900 tons, and that's a very rough estimate, and that's only by figuring what I've pushed into the, into that basement, and then there's still a bunch of voids in there, so it's still hard to figure, but that's the best way I've been able to come up with a figure so far.
Thank you.
So, basically, there would be, at that estimate, that would be $45,000, 1,000 tons, $45 a ton of the old 2017, as opposed to if it was 1,000 tons, that we're at $60,000 on there, rough figures on that. You had stated that you are, you are, we have already given a $30,000 tax concession, plus that one cement that should be actually technically be removed. We've agreed that it's, even though it's 15 feet down, that it could push up, it could cause problems in the future, but we've agreed to leave it there, and that was going to be another costly, what was, what would that estimate be, another $10,000 to pull that cement footing up, the one, on the one side, east side?
We're, we're talking about the cement floor in the basement? Yeah, my understanding is they've been instructed to remove it, for that floor to come out.
The floor? Yes or no?
Actually, the information I have right now is like, anything below here, foot, the agreement was to leave it as is and to be mentioned on the land title later on if it is sold, whatever, that there is a concrete foundation still in the ground.
On that, so that anything below eight feet is supposed to be left in the ground? Chair recognizes Mr. Bailey.
Yeah, no, that's not correct, and my understanding, Darcy, and talking with Andy Barber, is that they had made a decision to remove all the concrete, including the basement floor and the footings. If the, those concrete walls are going to be rebarred to the basement footings, okay, underneath there, there will be structural rebar in there, so you can't just take the walls out and leave the floor and footing there. And for, you know, my discussion when you've been in construction, I advised Andy that we don't know 30, 40 years down the road, it's going to not be our problem, but it's certain to be somebody else's problem, and they left it, and my understanding was, yes, it was going. That's why I asked you about the concrete, where it was going to be, if it was going to go to landfill, or did it have another permanent hole?
Chair recognizes...
The concrete part of, of the demolition.
Chair recognizes Mr. Van Betje.
I think, I'm fairly certain of this, and I know that the agreement was, originally they came asking not to remove the floor, or in the bottom half of the piles, and that was approved by the city. So, if they take the floor out, I guess that's their decision, and it probably is for the better, but the agreement was, I disagree with Counselor Mickel in that if we raise the water rates, then the residents have to pay for the increase in the water rates. The 2018 rates are the 2018 rates, and I, I don't like being that hard-nosed, but I do feel that we are passing that cost on. And I would like to thank yourself and Jerry Manil for doing this project, I'm very appreciative that the work stays in Waverne, because I know there's a chance it could have gone out, Waverne, and you're employing Waverne people, and I think that's terrific. I think going forward, I know that we're going to be looking at a lot of, you know, possibly some more demolition, and I know in larger centers, when they've demolished bigger buildings, the tipping fee, basically, it's the labor price that you bid on, and then the tipping fee is above the cost of the tender, because everybody pays the same tipping fee. So, I think that, if they bid it that way, that covers that unknown factor.
Chair recognizes Mr. Richards.
Thanks, Your Worship. Two questions for the Director of Engineering that I hope you can answer. Number one, and I know that Counselor Van Betje sort of touched on this, and maybe the city manager want to chime in, Jerry Manil Limited has offered to put equipment at our landfill, put employees at our landfill to help, for lack of a better term, clean up the mess as it comes in, if I've kind of phrased... term, clean up the mess as it comes in, if I've kind of phrased that properly, right? So is there a, is there a dollar figure we can attach to that so that our people and our equipment aren't being used to do this? That's my first question. My second question is, can you quickly, let's say using 700 tons as what we think might be the amount going out there, give us a calculation of current rates versus if we do, as Councilor Mickel is suggesting, roll that back to last year's rates? And I think I'd be closer to my decision. Thank you.
Yeah. Just to kind of, you say it's 1,000 tons, do our new math, modern math, rounding. That's 1,000 tons, $45, $45,000. Current rates, $60 a ton, $60,000. $15,000 difference on that. Answered your question for you. But yeah, very good. So anyways. And then, but I'll let you, Nader, go ahead and answer the first question that Mr. Richards has.
For dollar figure for the equipment to be at the landfill, sorting the material or like arranging the material, first need to know what will be the material at the landfill, coming to the landfill, and what will be the amount of time those equipment will be at the landfill in order to anticipate the value for the equipment.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't say, I wasn't expecting probably that you would give me an actual dollar figure. And if I said it like that, I apologize. But there would be a value to having them perform that service.
Definitely, that would be, yeah.
Chair recognizes Mr. Wheeler.
Thanks, Your Worship. Darcy, were they thinking of bringing a couple cats in to do this work?
Well, I'll have, I'll have probably a D8 cat and a Trac over there. We can move it, handle it any which way. I've talked with Claude Morn as to what they'd see best. And we've worked up there. We've provided support when the city equipment has been broke down and gone for repair. So we're familiar with it. I've got people that are very familiar with the employees up there working in that area. So it's, it's not something new, I guess. There's still the risk versus being a contractor on site or just moving material around too. But we can move that around. We can bury it. I guess that, it does have benefit for us because then we, you know, the goal for us is to keep our guys busy during breakup. We can provide that service.
So your estimation, say for easy figure and it is 1,000 ton, what do you, to bring that up to the landfill and probably handle it and manage it, how much time do you think you would need? And what do you think the rough estimate of the cost of a cat and a Trac would be?
Uh...
They took four days.
Nobody's expecting all this math homework today.
We're looking, well, for us, it's probably around $20,000. For, it depends how long, where they want it pushed, how we can get in. As time goes on, we're getting into worse weather. So it's getting muckier on the hill. It's going to be harder to get trucks in. And it's going to take longer because we're probably going to be limited to hauling only during the morning hours, possibly.
Okay, thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Mickel.
Thank you, Worship. Just one more comment on this topic. I think by allowing, I'm not saying Manil's can't do the work, you certainly can. I watched the operator that took down the inn and what they were doing. But you're opening up another box, Your Worship, and we're not going to close it. We're better off to just play with the 2017 numbers, either yes or no, but don't bring anybody else's equipment in. Now we're opening up for anybody else that wants to come into our community, offering the same package. Let's be consistent with the bylaw as it is. And the question at hand is 2017 rates or 2018 rates?
My comment is, would be that, there's two comments on here, is that I agree with Mr. Van Betje that we have limited our whole, since we took administration here, we saw the new study that was done, that was spent, $160,000 was spent on the study, talking that over the next six years, we're going to have to spend at least $1.5 million per year to get it into shape. And then that's only going to bring, we brought in a refuge program to try to extend the life of our program, our landfill, all the way through. So the idea is to cut out stuff and yet we're having to bring in, we're bringing in these mass projects over there. I can understand your consideration for it being easier to say, let's put a square footage figure on it. But as I was sitting, trying to comprehend that not everything is all the same, like a ton of insulation is a larger quantity. We're talking volume size as opposed to compacted size on there. So that's where it ends up that I think that, I would say that if we were looking at a proposal, that we say to the contractors, what you're going to have to start doing and have to start asking is that you bid on labor only and tell them, the people, that the tipping fees are simply a thing between us and this, and the city, or between the contract and the city. Because to give you a better bidding, that is totally unfair to you people to try to figure out tipping fees on that. And as to whether it is a 2017 or 2018 fees on that one, that I'll say that I would be willing to do, although it, I'm kind of in, divided into on this one simply because the, we were then told in the end of 2017 that at $45 a ton on there, that is a cost to the taxpayers, simply because $80 a ton is what our actual cost is. But we've been barely, we've been undercharging for years along the way. And this contract, I know the Barbers had talked about this before the end of 2017, and there were some delays because again, of different things going along. And the project wasn't extended until this point in time. And I would be willing at that to say, this is the last project that would ever go to, because it was started in there. But from now on, we have to make sure that when people come to us, we say, this is the price, it has to be done at this time, there's no extensions. And this would be the last project that we'd agree to, because it was started in 2017. Mr. Van, Chair recognizes Mr. Van Betje.
Thank you. This would be my last word on it. I just think that in the case of these large projects, it's actually a detriment to our landfill. It's going to, these large demolitions are going to fill up our landfill quicker. And as you said, our true cost is $80 a ton to operate the landfill. When we have these big demolitions, it's going to use up our landfill faster. We're going to have to spend more money quicker. So actually, these big jobs cost us more money rather than less money, in my estimation. And I think by giving a deal and going to 2017 rates, we've got another request coming from a person that demolished last year, and he's going to want a better deal because we gave this person a deal. So it just, I don't know, when you start, it just sets a standard where you're giving deals. And I think you have to get your cost out of it. And it's not fair to pass it on to the taxpayer. And as I say, and Nader can tell me whether I'm right or wrong, but I do think that these big demolitions are costing us more money to operate.
Chair recognizes Mr. Richards.
Thanks, Ian, Your Worship. I agree with you, Councilor Van Betje, in that it is absolutely something diligently we have to pay attention to, that we're recovering our cost to operate the landfill. And I'm going to, I'm going to sound uncharacteristic here, but I do feel like this particular project is a bit unusual in that we took great advantage. Our fire department also took great advantage of this property. And I know that we also gave some concessions. But we're talking about if it's 1,000 tons, which we don't know, but we're saying it's going to be around probably no more than 1,000 tons, let's say that, right? We're talking about a $15,000 or so difference. So if I can apply any sort of rationale to it, I feel like as a show of faith, I'm okay with the 2017 rates on this particular project, although I would echo a bit of what the mayor said, that I think we would have to stand firm going forward. This is a one-time deal based on us having a training partnership with that property before it was demolished.
And I'll agree too, is that this is most, it was attached to the 2017, it was done. But, and it was on the fault of ours, I would say that I will carry and as mayor, carry the fault of that. We're saying we're not, didn't have a finalized date. And going forward, when people come forward to doing it, that is stated to the people that there's no, it is a detriment, as Mr. Van Betje had said, these large projects are a detriment to our landfill, because we have only infinite, we don't have an infinite amount of space. We have a finite amount of space. There's going to be a finite life to it. These large projects which are going to come to it is the school, and hopefully one day the hospital that you're going to be dumping into. These are detriments to our, and we're trying our best by doing the refu, by doing the recycling. But the problem, what has happened is that we started this deal in the 2017. There were some agreements leaning towards it. There's a law of training rights into this. And all this other stuff became a very unclear thing. And this is that we, as the city, have to start making a lot more clear contracts stating, this is the final, this is it. There are no deals on landfills at all. Mr., Chair recognizes Mr. Van Betje.
It's always one more time. We're going to do this one more time. Next time, we're not going to do this anymore. It's, I've heard that so many times. The school's been talking about demolishing that building for two years now, probably prior to the Waverne Inn. How are you going to say no to them when they come asking for a bargain? And that's a much, much larger building. We've got to be consistent. We have to be fair. And I don't think we're going to, we're heading down that road.
Chair recognizes Mr. Mickel.
Do you want a motion to get this thing going?
We can get, yes, okay. If you want a motion, and then we can even table the motion.
Well, I don't think we have to table it. These people want to get going on their activity. Either we go it or we don't. So the motion I make is that we give Mr. Barber the tipping fees of 2017 for the Waverne Inn material.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion. Which is recorded discussion now. And at this point, I'll just leave it off there, that I will say that, and I guess this is backing, I'll have to back Mr. Van Betje, because I am in favor of the idea that we have to have, it is a finite amount of, and we have to make sure that our actual costs and actuality, we did a deal, and just thinking about it, we did a deal by raising the rates only to $60 a ton instead of the full $80 a ton. And we're raising it $80 a ton. At what point in time? Are we, next year?
That'll be in 2020.
2020. So we've got two years of $60 a ton on to this. And this is where, is, we are already giving a deal. We're already costing our citizens at this. So our landfill is very precious, but it's going to cost us millions and millions of dollars when we have to finish this landfill. These large projects are brutal. Chair recognizes Mr. Wheeler.
I do have one more question. Darcy, what would be the estimated square footage of the Waverne Inn?
It was 37,250 square feet.
So if we were to put that in, the cost, that was $35,000 and change is what it worked
out to if we used the formula of 94 cents per square foot.
And with that, you were also going to supply the equipment?
The equipment, Trac, which we estimated was going to be $20,000.
So that's equivalent to 44, or 440 tons in the landfill?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I think because the city did utilize the building, I kind of feel obligated to make the concessions, but that's my opinion. Yeah. So that's all I really have to say.
Yes, and I was going to say, yes, we did. And there is a cost that should be associated with that as to that we worked with them. And they did a large trading school. And that was, that's a good point to be brought up. There's large trades, and we did a large center on that. Were you discussing anything else, Mr. Van Betje?
Right.
No? Okay. Call the question. All in favor? Opposed?
Well...
Pardon me? It's defeated, defeated at that price.
Perfect. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Darcy.
Traffic bylaw amendments. We go to the traffic bylaw. Engineer?
The engineering department reviewed the traffic bylaw number 2016-3346 and proposed that the bylaw be amended to include the following list of definitions and snow routes. A detailed list of changes are presented in the document attached or presented to the council.
Do we have a motion?
Your Worship, it's for discussion tonight. There's no motion.
It's for discussion tonight?
It's for discussion tonight, correct.
Direction.
Okay, direction. Okay. I will start off this. My direction is that studies that I've seen, that we are simply in the only city within of the 12 cities around, or the top 10 cities anyway, that are still running at a 40K speed limit throughout. 50K speed limit is only a chargeable speed. It does not mean that everybody is going to be charging, going there. There is still a thing in the bylaw that, and it's in the provincial act too, all the years of policing, that you drive the speed for what road conditions are. And it's called drive too fast for road conditions. So if it's icy, it doesn't mean that the speed limit is 50, that people were going to be going 50. We have lots of people, the speed limit is 40, and they're only driving 20 within here. It is not, we do not have a minimum speed limit. We could put a minimum speed limit in if that, if you want to contain at 40 and say, that is the minimum maximum. Everybody has to drive at that speed limit. But they're not doing it. This is a maximum speed limit. And with that, that I would propose that you're going to go and do a 40, 50K speed limit. With that, studies of all, recent studies have also shown that they're talking that when you have a drastic change in speeds going, especially when you're saying change in speeds, that becomes more of a hazard too. And that is why I'm saying that we just keep the school zones at 40. Study, we had a past study that had shown recommendations all the way, I believe it was 50 years of study, and there was never a fatality within all the school zones at 40K. So there were not, it's not that, and I know that they say that if you're driving 30K, the difference between injuries between 30K and 40K are quite astronomical. But yes, you know what? So then, I bet you that there's astronomical between 20K and 30K. So are we going to drop it to 20K? We have to be reasonable. We have to make sure that traffic keeps flowing. And there isn't a rash out here of problems going. So I would propose that we simply are doing 50K and simply 30K, 40K in school zones. Restrict the school zones to elementary schools only. There's no need, because there's a control crossing at the comp school. There's no need for one there. Once St. Dominic is moved on, we have no need going past a college and a high school where there's a controlled intersection, as we have our youth here that are quite capable of crossing the street on their own. Chair recognizes our youth mayor.
As youth representative on city council, it is our duty to consult with young people in the community. And the large majority of young people in Waverne would like to see the speed limit increase. We look forward to learning more on this issue and hearing debate. We will have a more detailed report in the coming weeks.
Thank you very much for your very concise words. Other discussion. Chair recognizes Mr. Richards.
Thanks, Your Worship. Now, if, in, what you've presented here to us largely addresses changes in definitions, changes in terminology, and only one change actually in speed restrictions, and that is 150 meters north on Fifth Avenue on Highway 35, bringing that down to 40 kilometers an hour, like I said, for an additional 150 meters north. Is that right? Is that the only speed change in what you've presented to this point?
This is, and there is another speed change for, including playgrounds as well for school zone.
Right. Yes, thank you. Okay.
Sorry for the interruption. For the 150 meter, it is included here, like there was an approval which was like previously agreed upon. However, it wasn't included in the current bylaw.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Your Worship, what, you know, I feel like I sort of literally been around the track on this issue myself. But here, here's where I always come to it, is what is the problem we're trying to solve? What's the problem we're trying to solve by making a change? What's the problem we're trying to solve by making a change? And, and as I talk to folks in the community, and, you know, I can't find the problem that we're trying to solve. I get personally also feel a little bit inconvenienced going down to 30 kilometers an hour in a couple of spots, especially at, you know, 7:30 on a Sunday night. But I'm having a hard time finding the problem that we're trying to solve by changing the speed limit throughout the city. All of the stuff that our Director of Engineering has, has put in here, I completely get, because most of it is, is administrative in nature. So I understand all of the changes here. So if we need to vote on that and get that cleared away, I'm good to go. For having a discussion about the speed limit though around the community, sorry, I, I personally am having a hard time looking at a change, because I can't put my finger on what the problem is.
I guess what I, and I'll speak in here, interrupt, that the reason why we're trying to do is, we're trying to make it, what I'm coming from the point of view is, we're trying to clarify as to how, where we have in our city to make our city run smoothly, so there's a smooth traffic flow. On some of the streets, you have, you have 50K, there's some, there's, there's 60K. They're, they jump and moving all over. You're into this zone, into that zone. If you smooth it out so that the whole city is all 50, then you know that the whole city is all 50, and that is it. It makes it very easy, very simplified as to, except for then your zones as you're moving out. As for the school areas onto there, there's, it is the reason why I bring these up, that as we're making amendments and as we're making and revamps to the bylaws, that let us do it all at, as we move forward, as opposed to doing a piecemeal, bringing one piece of the bylaw now, one piece of the bylaw later. It is a lot easier as we make an amendment, as our city clerk can admit, that if we change out our bylaws, you do it all at one time, and then the bylaws change, and then it's rolled out, as opposed to adding things in this month, and then four months later, add another one in. It just makes an administrative nightmare. So that's why we're discussing a lot of these things onto there. And that we look back at, and again, I am all for safety. I am all for the safety of our children, I want to do it. But we also have to look at things that do not work. And there are things that have been added in, and they simply are not working. I've received complaints or two, where I'd like to say that they had in the past bylaw, where they said that school buses were not allowed to use the lights within the city. And then that was taken out, and the stop arms were brought in. And the reason why I would say that is that you talk to the bus drivers, they find that doesn't work. And Regina City has got written right in their bylaws where it states they don't allow it, right in the city of Regina, do not allow it, because it then makes the idea that these children are not learning how to cross the street properly. They're going around, they're stopping in the middle of the street, and that's where the buses are lighting them off, and they're running across, they're jaywalking across, and they should go back to the system where the buses stop at the corner, they exit the corner, they wait at the corner until the bus leaves, and then they cross at the corner where they're supposed to. And we're creating a hazard, it becomes more hazards. Chair recognizes Mr. Wheeler.
Your Worship would like to make some comments on the topic that we're discussing right now. A couple of observations I've made driving around the city in the last few weeks is, I do not feel safe driving in residential area going 50 kilometers an hour. I feel it's too fast. I, I want the speed limit to be 50. But I think in the residential area, I don't think that makes sense. But the main arterials in the city, I think it does make sense. And not that there's a specific reason why we should. I just think that the majority of the cities within Saskatchewan, that is the way it is. And it, it does speed traffic up a little bit, but it's specific to the area. I think we already have signs at the exit, or at the entrance of the city, it's 40 kilometers an hour within the city unless otherwise posted. So rather than changing the speed limit everywhere, we could just pick the main arterials where we feel that it is safe to do 50 kilometers an hour and be specific on where we do increase the speed limit, because there are some areas where it makes sense to be 40 still. Douglas Park, or around Jubilee Park, Douglas Road, there's a lot of kids there. I don't want to do 30 down there, but I think 40 would be a safe speed. And the one comment I hear from a lot of people I talk to regarding the 30 kilometers an hour, most of people feel that they're more distracted watching their speedometer to make sure that they're not speeding and not really paying attention to what's going on around them. So that in itself is a hazard to the kids, so. And I tend to agree. I know when I hit those zones, I'm looking at my speedometer to make sure I'm in compliance. I don't want to get a ticket as a city councillor speeding in a school zone, for one. But I, I do find myself looking down at my speedometer more often than I probably should in an area where you shouldn't be looking down at your speedometers in a school zone. And I've had several people comment on that. I, I tend to agree with them. I'm okay with the 30K zone, or speed limit in those areas, but I just feel that it is not natural. Most vehicles nowadays don't do 30 easily, and you're constantly speeding up and slowing down, braking. And I think that in itself is probably more of a hazard than doing 40. That's all I have, sir.
Chair recognizes Mr. Van Betcher.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm kind of along the same line as, as Councillor Richard in that I don't think it's really broken. So I, I don't see any real advantage to changing it. The 30 kilometer an hour in the school zones, you know, maybe, I know when we initially brought it in, we thought about changing the time limit and putting a time limit on it, and there's different opinions on that. If it's 40 everywhere in town, I don't think we have to put up a lot of signs around. We can leave it at the Douglas Park mall area, and maybe some other areas that we think people need to slow down. We've been told Weyburn is a great place to live, and I think I'll include a safe place to live. We haven't, that I have any knowledge of any severe accidents, injuries, or deaths from people getting hit. And who's to say whether we avoid any or not? But I think we want to promote Weyburn as a safe, great place to live and raise children. And I don't think that by raising the speed limit, we're doing that.
Chair recognizes Mr. Wheeler.
Thanks, Your Worship. Using the same analogy, why did we go to 30 kilometers an hour if there was nothing wrong with it? Why did we change it to 30 kilometers an hour from 40?
Chair recognizes Louise. Who's out?
Well, Mr. Councillor Wheeler already said that, but I also would like to add that there are a few, that I am for increasing the speed limit, but I would like to address the problem that comes with it, since the school area is not only limited to high school students, but there are also junior high students and a daycare up on the exact same building. So there is that problem. But during the rush after school or before school, there is a sudden slow, and I guess because of the speed limit, the traffic isn't the best. And because of that, kids are more likely to think, yes, we're safe, we could just run across, despite there might be five cars lining up.
Chair recognizes Mr. Richards.
Thanks, Your Worship. And I want to thank the members of the youth council, because I know you guys are in the same boat we are. We're trying to wrap our heads around what's the right thing to do, because we hear folks, and I hear it, that's the, probably one of the complaints I heard most during the election campaign, was, oh, the, the 30K thing is just, is just unmanageable. And I get that slowing down to 30 kilometers an hour is frustrating, but I don't know that it's a problem. And, and that's what I'm stuck on. So to our Director of Engineering, I wonder, again, I will say what's been presented to this point today in, in what you presented, I'm 100% behind everything you've suggested there. As we go forward and talk about the speed limit around the city, I would be interested in some statistics from the police department. You know, what, what does ticketing look like in the school zones since this has, like, is this a real problem for us? I'd be interested in, you know, some comparative analysis to some other. I, I really get frustrated sometimes when we, and I want to, and I want to acknowledge Councillor Chessel, who isn't here today, had some thoughts on this too. Him and I spoke at great length yesterday. Some, some challenges around us continuing to compare ourselves to Regina and Saskatoon and say, they do this and they don't do this. We have to be careful when we start to do that, because currently today, if I'm leaving on vacation on Friday, I can pull my motorhome around and park it on the street for a couple of days. And I can't do that in Regina.
No, you can't.
So we need to make sure we're comparing apples and apples. So I guess, again, to the engineering, there's other cities our size, not just in Saskatchewan, but in Alberta, in B.C., Manitoba. What are they doing? Are they at 30, 40, 50? I, I'm cautious of comparing us to Regina and Saskatoon too often, because we aren't Regina and Saskatoon.
And as a former policeman, no, you can't. 24, 48 hours.
Well, whatever.
We'll have to check on.
Now you're going to check on me. So, but, but I guess there's a lot of differences between us and Regina and Saskatoon. So I'd like us to just be conscious of that. So some, whatever data you can, I realize we're not making a decision on this tonight, we're having an open discussion. Whatever data you can bring back, whether that's from police, whether that's from other communities. I just, again, I appreciate what Louise is saying, that the problem we have is some of the unintended consequences. We lower it to 30, and I hear it from, from the guys that live on Brimacoam, that folks are jumping off of Fifth Avenue and they're heading down Brimacoam at 55 kilometers an hour, because they don't want to deal with the 30K zone in front of Cinnaboy Park. So we've created some unintended consequences here, we've got to have a bigger discussion about. Sorry, I'll stop. Thanks, Your Worship.
Chair recognizes Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think you know where I stand on this. I'm going to question your other cities of our size. I was recently in Estevan and recently in Musjja, and there's, there are 40 kilometers on their streets, okay? Some of the main thoroughways are going. As far as changing speed zones within a city, really, that is complicated for us as adults in driving? I, I don't see it. You, you go into any city that you're not familiar with, what are you looking for? You're looking for the speed limit in, on that street. And you can come in, and it's 60, down to 40, or whatever it is. So I don't buy that argument neither. I will never support a 50 kilometers speed limit in our city. I have no issue of taking an extra 10 seconds out of my day to drive past Hague School for those three blocks. And I mean, really, what are we trying to do here? I mean, we, we can identify that we're a small city. Most of the people that come and do business within our city, out of small towns, Fillmore, Stoughton, all around us, they're all at 40 kilometers an hour. We're not changing the world to be faster. What have we got to be faster for? I've used analysis before of how long it takes to get to coffee for me. And I just think we have more time than trying to make our city faster, and in my opinion, unsafe.
Chair recognizes Louise.
I would just like also to mention that in a quick consensus in a class in Weyburn Comp, the students are for keeping the 30K limit, but with time limits. They, they do want a more quicker speed during the weekends, but they, they, they are okay with keeping it during the school hours, because they know there are smaller kids during school time. So if it would appease the council, there is still that choice.
Chair recognizes Mr. Mikkel.
Thank you, Worship. Thanks, Louise. I, I, I'm learning on this situation, we're not going to win it. You can't please everybody. But when we implemented this a couple of years ago, maybe a year ago or so, we, we knew it would be contentious at 30 kilometers per hour, because it was something new around the school zone. If in fact it saves a life, I'm all for it. So I think we have to leave it at 30 and put a time element. 7 o'clock to, 7 a.m. to 7 p.m., seven days a week, and move on. To me, it's, it's not a big issue. I talked to a gentleman that just moved into our community. He's been here for four and a half years. He said, Councillor Mikkel, what's your problem? It takes me 10 minutes to get across the city. You must have more important things to talk about, and he's right.
At this, we will draw our discussion to a close here. Chair recognizes Mr. Richards.
No, you don't have to.
Yes, you can, you, go ahead.
I would say if the problem we are trying to, thank you, Your Worship, for giving me one last moment here to talk endlessly about this. I would say if, the problem we're trying to solve is traffic flows. I know that Councillor Mikkel's going to, I can hear his eyes rolling already in his head. The problem is that I think we have two things. Number one, the train cuts us in half for 20% of our day. That is not good. And number two, we have a love affair with four-way stops in our community. And that really does slow traffic down, I think, more than a drop down to 30K for two or three blocks. Thank you.
And with that, with that, we'll move on with the, Mr. Moore?
Yes, we're looking for some direction tonight from council, because right now, there's a lot of good deliberation you guys are having regarding this. And Nader, as Director of Engineering, is just looking for direction. If you guys want to look at this, if you guys do not want to look at this anymore, we want to know a direction for us to move forward and to bring this back to council if needed that way.
Now, then, I would say that the direction, and I will leave it to, it says that I will propose onto here, that we, and then you can do a motion for it or against it at next council meeting, whichever they wish. But I would take this step and say, do a direction as the, that we do 50 throughout the city and the, leave the 30K in the school zones with restricted times, and not 7 to 7, but you're simply, you're 8 to 4 school zones, time periods. And from there, they can, instead, not 7:00 in the morning, because there's no kids going to school at 7:00 in the morning. And there's, and at 4 o'clock, school's done, and we're done for that. Chair recognizes Mr. Van Betcher.
Just quickly, I would suggest we do a little bit longer hours, only because we have like, I'm thinking 7 o'clock to 8 o'clock, something like that, or 9 o'clock even, because we have playgrounds and everything else in those same areas. So I think we have to extend it a little bit longer than just the school hours.
Chair recognizes Mr. Richards.
I'm not done. I think if we're going to put time restrictions on it, I'm okay with that, but let's look to leisure services. What time does the paddling pool close? That's the time you cut this off. It's not during school hours. The paddling pool is open all summer when there's no school. And so I think that's a spot that we would leave in, in the discussion, right? Even whether Hague School's there in a few years or not, we're going to have a speed reduction outside of the Don Mitchell Pool.
And that's the direction we want from you guys. If that's what you guys want to look at, we can look in that for times. If it's times we're looking at, we can look at times. If you guys are looking at speeds, we can look at speeds. But I'm getting mixed bag from, from council tonight.
It sounds like there's, there's some folks that would like to see the speed changed, and some folks that are pretty comfortable with it where it is. And then it sounds like maybe there's a discussion around the times that it's reduced in the cautionary zones, whether that's playgrounds and schools.
For the time restrictions for those zones, there's different methods here, or different cities are implementing different techniques. Part of it is from hour to hour, 7 to 7 as an example. Regina is from 8 to 10, 10 p.m., which I feel is a little bit extensive. There is some restriction on, on the timing, like they put it as school year. So like from September to the end of June. So which type of restriction you want in the school zones? We have to be specific on this one. So is it time restriction by hour or by day, school days, or school year?
Pick a, pick a choice, start it off. Okay, I will start it off. I, I will start it off, I'll say, let's just simply do it by time, because you start adding in these, these, all these other complicated things, and it becomes. So, and I would say that I still don't agree with the 7, 7 p.m. I would say 7, if you're going to go in the morning, 7 to 5, and simply leave it at that. Or 7 to 7, you can bring back at 7 to 7. So, and make it easy, 7 to 7. Bring it back. And then we, these are the proposals.
So, so administration, what we'll do is we'll come back with one, times, and two with, with speeds for you guys to talk about.
City, citywide speed.
Yep.
Increase to 50.
Take three hundred, Louise.
And, and that, no, school buses can't use the flashlights. I'll bring that up. Yes, I'll, well, you can shoot me down on that, but read up and see the background behind it, and read Regina's bylaw, which states that it doesn't, they do not allow the buses to do that at all. So there are no, are there any inquiries and announcements on here? Anything to inquire about, of our city administration? You must be doing a wonderful job. There's no inquiries.
Fantastic, great.
Fantastic, so. Are there any notice of motions? Request for clarification? There's no request for clarification, and there's no committee of the whole. And with that, I would thank all for attending here. They gain our deep sympathies to all the families of the casualties and victims of the humble Broncos.